City Council Workshop is now in session on this March 15, 2022. Do we have any public comments?
No one has signed up, sir.
Okay, all right. Let's move then to 2A. Presentation using the design-build method for redevelopment of the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. You were quoted on the front page of the paper today.
Yeah, you can't win them all. No, it's an honor to be on the paper and to be presenting here today. The water system's been doing great. I think they did a great job or a great job of representing that. So there was, it's always good to be prepared for the conditions that are coming over the course of the summer. So, but here this morning, we're here to talk about the A.C. Schreiner House and the renovation that's forthcoming. The house is over there on Water Street. I'm sure everybody's familiar with that. It does, it was identified in the Kerrville 2050 Plan. It was one of some of the guiding principles that we have in there. It's action item six, or excuse me, D 1.6, support new anchors in the downtown such as the A.C. Schreiner Mansion, increase public and visitor traffic. And guiding principle number, the second one, D 2, downtown, foster a downtown that tells the community history, stories, lore, and preservation and enhancement of historical features and a scenic sense of place. Excuse me. Action item number D 2, consider funding a downtown heritage center. So in line with those two items is why we're here today. The process actually started before the 2050 Plan was adopted. It started back in 2016. With, or excuse me, back in 2015 when the, when this city acquired the A.C. Schreiner House, it was donated to the city. The initial adaptive building use study was completed in 2015. Initial library campus master plan was completed in 2017. The renovation product referred to and adopted by the Kerrville 2050 was in 2018. So that's where that came into the city's Kerrville 2050 Plan there. So it already had two years or three years worth of work going on before it was listed in there. But still, at that time, the public decided, hey, this is something good. We need, we need this in our downtown district. So it did get included in that plan. Execution of an MOU with the Heart of the Hills Carriage Center was talked about in 2000. Repurpose the facility was in 2019. Revisited library campus concept plan in 2019 as well. Public presentation of the project to city council was in 2020. And then HEB and HEB Foundation grants were awarded to the city in 2021. In 2021, the presentation of the development agreement between the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center and the city of Kerrville was, was brought to council on January 26th of 2001. Council approved that agreement. That's a little bit of what we'll be talking about today. Some, a lot of, a few of the next slides will be dealing with that particular agreement itself and how the relationship between those two entities was thought to, thought to be appropriate. And we'll work through that. The document was executed by both parties in February of the same year. So within that document, it talks about two different practices. And those two, number one and number two on this slide are actually excerpts from that agreement. It gives, lays out what the city's supposed to do. The city shall design, remodel, renovate, and develop the house into a public venue conducive to exhibiting displays and programs that will reflect the culture and heritage of the Hill country, Kerrville Hill country and the Texas country, consistent with equality, quality of a, I mean, consisting of a quality museum. Stumbling over my words this morning. apologize. The HHHC shall lease, furnish, manage, maintain, and operate the house. The party shall, the party intend that the house will be utilized as a multicultural, educational, recreational, and entertainment venue for the benefit of the public. So that's kind of the two deal points that we were, city kind of works with the shell and the heritage centers work with the outside and what's proposed to do with it over the course of the years. Little bit more detail out of the contract here for the, what is a city supposed to do? We're supposed to raise funds from private sources and donations. We've done that. We, a lot of those, all of our funds have been accounted for and we'll talk more about that in a few minutes. The next step was to select, select funds and manage the architectural and design features. A little bit of what we're here to talk about today. We've, we've done some of those studies, the concept plans. Now we're ready to, to move forward with how do we, how do we get actually under real construction? And that's the difference in the, the design-build concept and then also the low bid concept or construction cost. Okay? Select or request HHHC to review construction plans. We will do that. We will work with them and try and figure out how the best layout, the inside of the building, of things that they can use it for so they'll know, you know, what, what's going to go on the first floor, second floor, where plugs are, kind of how the finish out of the building is going to be on the inside. And this is a, a cut out of the, out of the contract too. I think it better defines what the city's requirement is. Section 4.2, city shall at its cost be solely responsible for the completion and the design, so consolidation of bids for the work and the construction and of the construction improvements subject to the terms of this agreement. In regard to the city shall enter into and perform all contracts necessary to complete the construction improvements in accordance with state law. All designs, remodels, and renovations shall be performed to the city's codes, ordinance, regulations, designs, standards, and specifications. City shall provide written notice to HHHC of any material changes to the construction plans. City shall control and own the drawings, specifications, and other documents prepared pursuant to this agreement. That's the city's portion of the work. Still got a little work to do there on some of that stuff. So Heart of the Hills Heritage Center portion of it, they're going to work with the city to complete the concept plan. They've already done that. We have a concept plan completed by Peter Lewis. And Scott Shellhase actually did some pricing for it back in 2019. And so we've done that piece of work. HHHC was to raise a million dollars for start-up capital, purchase of fixtures, furnitures, display artifacts, and other items. They've already raised their billion dollars. So we've.
Stuart, can you advance it one?
Nope, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And they've already done that. And so they're, they're ready now. We've kind of checked those boxes as per the agreement. And so the city has our money, the HHHC has their money, and we're ready to, to process to, to start working on the house. Operate the house is more, more of what the Heart of the Hills is going to do after the, after the construction is complete. They're going to operate the house as a museum and a cultural center. HHHC can operate the house in lieu of fee or lieu of rent, but must provide and acquire, build, and install all furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. It is a 10-year lease with a 12-year option. So the funds that the city has acquired already is $500,000 from the HEB. HEB Foundation also donated $500,000. Library Memorial Fund donated $2 million. And the city of Kerrville hot funds, tourism hot funds donated a million dollars as well. So that rolls up into the $4 million that the city needed to fund the project and that has, it's been accounted for. Renovation funding for HHHC board, they, they were going to raise a million dollars worth of funds. Those funds came from the following foundations. Peterson Foundation, Ray and Ruby Stevens Foundation. I should say the numbers too because that's where it all interested. Peterson Foundation donated $250,000. Perry and Ruby Stevens Foundation also donated $250,000. There were some stipulations on that one. They, they would like it to be used for elevator ramps, bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera, ADA compliant things. That's a piece that the city's going to do as part of the work. It doesn't really fit in with the requirement for the HHHC. And so we are going to probably exchange funds so we, because we're going to do that work anyway. And so we'll do some, we'll be bringing to, to council next week, actually, some amendments to the contract. And that will be one of them that you will see on there that, that though they, they've gotten funds to fund specific type of work, we are going to accept that and reimburse them those funds so they can use them for the artifacts on their side. Okay? Calo Foundation gave $100,000. Community Found, Community Foundation gave $100,000. The Meadowview Foundation of Dallas gave 50. Friends of the Library gave 250. Of 100, and 100 of that has been, has been received already by the city. And the rest of it, we are, they've promised us it, but we haven't yet to receive it. But it's coming, forthcoming. Okay? So what is the project going, what does the project cost look like for us? So here's the funding piece. That first part, their city of Kerrville's was going to be $4 million. The HHHC was going to, to, or they're doing, their funding was going to be a million dollars. We have total of $5 million. Construction costs, this is back in 2019 before COVID and before some of the now present things are in the building market. So that was originally $3.6 million. There's some capital revenue, major maintenance items that we're, that we're looking at outside of the building project. So it's, that's about $400,000 was the reserve number within the contract that they recommended. And then the HHHC, the startup cost was a million dollars. So we're at $5 million. We got even, a good, we're approved or have enough funds to start the project. So how do we start the project? We've been looking at this for quite some time. We, we checked those boxes of, I guess obviously if anybody has any questions up to there. Because now we're going to talk about design build. We're kind of moving out of the contractual piece of the agreement of what was laid out for how we administer this project with one, how we work together. And now we're going to move forward in how we actually build the project. So if there's any questions up to this point.
So you'd be talking about any differences in cost throughout your presentation?
A little bit.
And how we're going to account for those?
Yeah, somewhat, yes. But I think we will answer that question in the design build process.
Okay.
When did the city receive the $100,000?
From the Friends of the Library?
Yes. I mean, that was the first portion you said, right?
Yes, that was in the OIFR and we'll get the second $150,000 in May.
Okay. They've committed to 250, yes, sir.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, now we're going to talk about how do we make this work? How do we make the project work? So the state of Texas has about six or eight different project delivery methods is what they call it. You can do the sealed bid process, the design-build process, there's construction, there's, there's six or eight different ones. We've looked at them as a staff and said, there's really only two good options here. Typically, what we do on all of your project work, public works projects is a sealed bid process. What we do on probably 99% of our projects. This is a design build process and this is what's going to be recommended for this project. They're a little different. I'll explain the two differences for you. Please ask questions along the way. It's the competitive build, the competitive bid process, I'll read through that as y'all look at a picture here and maybe it'll be a little bit easier for you to understand or I can go back to the language if you want. So the way this works is that the owner actually goes out and we hire two different people. You can see the solid lines between the contractor and the designer. They go back to the owner. We go out, we hire a designer. The designer does the design for us. We work with them, tell them exactly what we want. And they, and then they bring it back to the city and the city goes out, the city being the owner in this particular slide, goes out and bids those projects. And then we find the builder that wants to do it for the right price or assumingly the right price. He bids on it and we go through that process. The problem is, is there's a whole bunch of, of, how, what's the best way to say this? Discrepancies maybe in the plans and how the builders or how the designer wrote the plans and how the builder's reading the plans. And so there's, there's always a little bit of give and take there. The design build process kind of removes some of that. What you do is you bring the builder together or you, you're actually hiring a team. You're hiring an architect or a designer and a builder as a team. And you say, okay, we do have a dollar amount that we're going to spend. We have $3.6 million. We want y'all to be able to work together, understand, have the builder talk to the designer. So when they're saying, he said, man, I could really, I could do this a lot cheaper if I didn't like this. They work through all that amongst themselves and the city's really not in that discussion. This here is different. Every time the builder, or in this, or this is called contractor, every time the contractor wants a change order, he goes back to the city. The city goes back to the designer, they make the change. And so every time it's, we're the, we're the middle guy and we're always trying to buffer those two, those two entities. And it gets to be a little challenging. It's what we have to do per state law because we're not over 100,000 people. Only, whole nother sidebar discussion we'll talk a little bit about later. But that's like basically the process that we do on any public works project.
That's the process for the design method?
Seal, that's, that's the sealed, sealed bid process.
We use this very frequently as Mr. Barron mentioned in regards to public projects, very straightforward projects. You know, when it's a relatively, well, some of them get pretty complex. But you know, when it's a very straightforward project and there's, you know, pretty clear-cut engineering. But even then, you know, frequently we'll have change orders because when you get into the field, sometimes that's different than the way a project could be engineered because you may just not know the conditions. And so Mr. Barron's also going to elaborate on the design build process, which allows for much more flexibility, particularly with much more complex projects like the one that we have today.
Okay. So the competitive build process is required by the state of Texas. Anytime a public works project's going to go, it costs more than $50,000, the state says, you have to go through a, some kind of process, a delivery method. Usually it's the sealed bid process. And this is that process out here. We've kind of talked about it earlier where the design team develops the plans, advertises for the plans, evaluates the bids, and then helps also monitor the building, building of the, of the project. The building contractor, on the other hand, bids on the project. That's the first time they see the plans. They rank, they rank in the evaluation, ranks first in the evaluation process. So he sees the plans, bids on it, he gets awarded the plans, basically number two, works with the owner and the design consultant to build the project and completes and provides the warranty. That's the big, those are the sealed bid process. Next is the design build process. Let me go to my, my picture here. It's a little bit different picture and then we'll go back and walk through those, those deal points as well. So the owner in this, this situation is, is on top of it, obviously the city of Kerrville. We would, the solid line down to the design build is we would pick one design build team. That design build team would be the contractor and the designer and they would both work together to present that, to complete that project and bring it back to the owner. And so we don't have that, you know, if, well, if you use this kind of paint, you're going to save this many dollars. If you don't do wood and you do this, they've kind of already all worked that out because they work together. They're, they're their own team. The owner's rep over here on the side, it's a requirement by the state. And so the state says, hey, if you're going to do this process, we still think that you need somebody to help you walk through that process with you and understand it because there is some state law that's, that governs this process. And our design, our owner's rep right now is, is going to be Freezing Nichols. And John's here today to answer any of those questions if you have any questions for him that I, that I can't answer. But that lays out the process. I'm going to back up just a little bit. We'll walk through this a little bit more, the design bill. So the city's part of the, the council approves a resolution to allow the design bill. We'll be bringing that resolution to y'all next week. If, if y'all decide during this workshop that that is something y'all want to see, we're ready to move forward with that. They hire an independent consultant professional to facilitate the design build contract. Mr. New has been on, he is working with us to get all the proper documents and make sure we do everything proper by the state and we don't do anything that, that's going to cause us a problem in the rules. And that's the chapter 252 and 2269 of the local and Texas government code that we're complying with. After that, we're going to issue a request for expression, which basically says we go out looking for architects and engineers, just kind of a notice saying, go out. The city's got a project that we're going to do a design build process for. Can I get your stuff ready? And then after that, we go out to issue a request for qualifications. And that's where they actually submit back to us and say, hey, I'm an architect and I have a builder and we want to, we want to apply for this process. And this is what we, these are the projects we've done in the past together and how they've worked out. And they give us that. We evaluate those and we're going to pick those on what they've done in the past, you know, a few different criteria and we'll line that criteria out so it's all written down. So there's no, no question about how did we select the right, or our finalists? And then we select them and we, and they're, and they will be our design build team. And we'll move forward with that. Their, their responsibilities on this from the contractors' line is they develop the plans together, develop cost estimates and work through a given budget to complete the project, negotiate general conditions, fees. This is the part, this is the piece that's really kind of unique to it where they work together to say, hey, we're going to charge you X as our fee. When the previous process, they're completely independent of one another. You don't know how each other, how they're going to treat each other, how they're going to treat us, to be quite frank with you. This, we kind of get a look into it early on. They provide a guaranteed price maximum. And that goes back to answering your question of, is there any way to kind of limit our exposure here? Yes, we're going to start that original process where we request for expression. We're going to say, hey, we're looking for a design build team that can, that can do a project like this for $300, $3.6 million. And we'll give them all the information we have, but we're not going to hold them to that $3.6 million at that moment. We're going to work with them and say, okay, now y'all does, y'all, y'all build some plans. Let's make sure that we're getting everything we want, all that the, the Heart of the Hills Heritage House wants within those plans, we're getting everything that we want. And then that kind of gives us an opportunity to look at it again and say, okay, well, they're working together. They, they can only do it for $4 million. Well, let's, let's, let's remove some of that stuff out of the scope or let's add more if, if there's a room to add more. But we can still say we are, we're not, we can't spend any more than $3.6 million. And at that point is when we lock them in. After they get a little bit more time to review, to understand the process more. Because right now, they really don't know what they're bidding on. And if you don't know what you're bidding on, you're really going to, it's going to cause you to raise your bid. And so we want to give them that time to go study the project, figure out what's the proper method of, of completion, and then, then bid on, then tell us what, really what the costs are going to be.
So before we make, or before y'all make a final selection, this, or you make the final selection and then they tell you what the actual cost is.
So we'll go out, we'll make the final selection based on, on their capabilities and qualifications. And then we give them, we're going to work with them for probably a month or so to, to develop the plans. And at that point is when we lock them in and say, okay, yes, these are the plans we want and this is the budget we have.
Mr. Hoppy, if, if it does come back and is going to be over $3.6 million or to be considered above $3.6 million, is there council action at that point? What are we authorizing to happen up to an amount?
Yeah, right now that is the approved budget from council for the project. You know, we'll have to come back to council and talk about scope revisions or, you know, a change in that budget at that point. But our hope is that this process allows us more flexibility to really be able to work hand in hand and partnership with the design build team to get as much scope as possible for the budgeted amount.
And not that I want it to go over, but if it does, I mean, are you anticipating it coming out of our general fund at that point? Or we have to go back and consider at that time what it is and how much and what the options are?
Absolutely. And fundraising is continuing to, to progress. You know, I know Heart of the Hills Heritage Center is absolutely still out there doing fundraising. And so, you know, both sides are still working outside the equation as well.
So are we anticipating that it's going to be more than the three?
I'm just saying with, I'm just saying with construction costs, since you were mentioning the 2019 estimates, I'm thinking maybe it might be a bit more than what was originally budgeted.
Yeah, I, I.
Just a guess, I have no idea. Yeah.
Absolutely. Overall, right now, we're going to try to get as much scope as we possibly can out of the budget that's been allocated.
Yeah, because it, it makes sense to me that doing a design build process rather than a sealed bid process would get everybody on the same page and minimize any cost overruns, which usually occur when you do any kind of construction at all. I mean, I know a simple bathroom remodel for $12,000 winds up being 16 when it's all said and done. And if we could get all of those costs nailed down in the beginning and have those two working together, then we would be more inclined to, to stay within that budget.
That's right.
Exactly. Well said.
There's two big benefits to the design build process and that's an alignment of vision between the designer and the builder early on. And then obviously the, that alignment with what the owner's vision is as well. And more importantly, what the owner's budget is.
Right. If you take the architect and the builder and you have them work together, I think it provides more efficiency than, and it saves time, which results in a cost savings to the taxpayer. That's what I see.
That's, yes, and we agree and that's why we're here today. It does take a resolution from council to allow a city of our size to do a design build. And so we wanted to kind of bring y'all up to speed and tell y'all this is, this is our recommendation. I'll, we'll go through a few more of the benefits and then we'll, we'll go through the next steps and answer more questions. So benefits of design build compared to competitive bid, the better lines of the builder and the designer, like, like we talked about, the potential of a faster overall project delivery. So when you let the project, they've both seen it. You know, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing big and scary in there. They're not reading the plans to try to find things that are hidden. They, they know what it's, what it's going to look like. Guaranteed maximum price, we will negotiate that. We, we know we're, what we're doing when we go in. Within reason, you know, it is a remodel. You're, we're going to, once they pull the, pull some of the stuff off, there are some things that, that are happening. But we, we're saying this is what we want to spend. You know, it's not just an open check. More collaboration between the builder and designer from the beginning of the design process. Minimize that adverse adversarial relationship between the builder and designer and the owner. That can get a little bit tricky on these other plans. You know, there's, whose fault is it if the plans, if the plans don't say it and the owner's always bailing out one of the two? So we're always the middle guy on that deal. Provide, obtain the best value through evaluation criteria, not just the lowest price bid. Builder involved in the design process early results in fewer change, project claims, and a better overall constructability. So we, we lean towards that design build process, that design build team. Think it's going to be a whole lot cleaner for this project, especially since it is a remodel. You'll get as much information as we can to the right people so we can get really good numbers as best we can get going into the process. So what are the next steps? How do we move forward with this? The March 22nd, the next council meeting, next Tuesday, if you desire, we'll bring you a resolution to, to apprise, to approve the design build process. We have to do that per Texas government code 2252 and local government code, local government code of 2269. And then we will also at that council meeting bring you some amendments to the contract so we're able to move that money around like we talked about. And there's a few other things that we would like to discuss in there with y'all at the executive session level. Kim Meismer's been working on the contract administration. She also helped me with this PowerPoint presentation. So Kim, thank you for all your effort on this. The Heritage House, Heritage, HHHC has also been working with us too. We're, this is not something we're just doing on our own. So this is just the next step.
Under these circumstances, a little bit different than you normally operate, do you anticipate being able to find a builder and designer, contractor and designer that will work together?
Yes, 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 we do.
Okay.
We, we would like, I would like the process more if we could do it on public works projects more because it makes a lot of sense. To me, it makes a ton of sense. However, the state says if you're not over 100,000 people, you can't do these for public works projects, even with council approval, so.
Why is that?
State law is just, it's an oddity. I don't know. John, you may be able to collaborate.
I can tell you something that would, that would probably offend you and insult you a little bit. But when they first came out with that, the statute actually talks about two different design bills. One for buildings like this, one for heavy civil, roads, pipelines, pump stations, things like that. When they first came out with the legislation, they felt.
Excuse me, excuse me. Would you come to the mic?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Does this one?
This one. I'm still Stuart's mic.
Yeah, so, yeah, so basically what the state did is when they adopted this legislation, probably, I think in 2011, what they said was they wanted to have the bigger cities, they felt like would have more capability and more availability of staff to be able to do these types of projects. And so they wanted to limit it so that the smaller, because what they did is they did not want design build to take off and everybody try it and then it failed. And then it would have a lot of bad reputation and nobody would want to do it. So they wanted to start small with the bigger cities to do that. And some, some mid-sized cities might think, well, we can do it just as well as the big cities, which I agree. But that's just the way they wrote this legislation and they just haven't changed it. So right now for heavy civil, you just can't, if you're less than 100,000 population, you can't do design build on any heavy civil project. You can on a building project. This is a building, vertical building, in this case, a house slash museum. You can do that on those. But that's why they did it. It sounds kind of crazy to me, but I don't work in Austin.
We'll have to talk to some people that work in Austin. While you're, while you're there, can you explain more about the relationship between yourself and this scenario in our city?
Yes, as far as Freezing Nichols goes, what, when I talked to Stuart about this, we, we provide a lot of services to our clients for what we call owner's rep. And regardless of the type of project, and this happens to be one where we do step in and act on behalf of the owner and, and work with them. In this case, it's gonna be a tag team effort, we're not doing everything. We're just, like Stuart said earlier, uh, we're just working with them to make sure we've got everything, uh, that all of our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted as far as the legislation goes, so we're doing everything right, doing the process, that's why we're here today. Uh, and then once we get through that, work with the city, uh, to get through the, uh, request for qualifications and then the subsequent request for proposals. Uh, and it's just really just to make sure everything gets, uh, kicked off right and gets going. Once it's underway, it's gonna primarily be staff handling that. I'll just be there for, for, uh, uh, any consultation or any, any support that Stuart might need.
Okay.
So Freezing Nichols is not designing the project at all? They're purely playing a guidance role for us in this new process that we're utilizing, if council decides to utilize it.
Let me say that, um, I really appreciate Freezing Nichols and what you do and the breadth of experience that you bring to us, having worked in lots of places, lots of cities. So it helps us.
Well, we're, we appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys and, and frankly, for me personally, this is just a cool project. I mean, I, I really think it is, I mean, it, it's, this is, this is, makes it fun. But yeah, we're glad, uh, glad to be here and glad to help.
Freezing Nichols usually does everything underneath the ground, so people don't get, don't get to see the work much.
And we do have a, we do have a complete architectural facilities group that does this kind of work. But this is just, we felt like this is a, our better role here to help you was in this role, not in, uh, working on the design book.
Okay.
Speaking of the qualifications, who makes that decision? Is that, is that, is that a lateral decision again, or is that?
We'll provide information to staff, uh, and some recommendations, uh, as far as what qualifications we wanna see and how the scoring criteria, if that's what you're talking about, to, to develop that. And once that's all done, and that'll be, that'll be a, a, a team effort between, uh, everybody on, on the, from staff and then with just some recommendations from us. Once we determine that, then, um, we haven't talked about specifically how the selection process will go, but typically we'll have a committee, uh, of three to five people that will be on a, a selection committee and they'll evaluation, evaluate all of the proposals and, uh, make determinations. I probably won't be on that, I may just provide some, I may look at it and just provide some recommendations, but I may not be on it officially. Typically, that's how we do it, is we'll play in an advisory role, but we're not an official voter, if you want to call it that.
So you're recommending?
Yeah, we're, we're providing some input to them so that, so in case they have questions or not clear on something or we need to go back and ask the proposers or so, some questions that can help with that.
Typically, who would be on that committee?
Typically, it's gonna be, uh, some of the key people in the staff that's gonna be overseeing the project. I would say, I would say Kim, I would say Stuart, maybe, maybe Kyle. Um, you could have a council person on there, that's not real common, but that's, that's, it's possible. Uh, and then sometimes you would have, um, uh, somebody from, uh, ma- maybe, maybe the, uh, procurement or, or, uh, uh, finance folks. Typically, typically you don't want more than about, uh, five.
But someone from the heritage committee?
They could absolutely be on there, absolutely, absolutely. You could, you could have some outside folks on there if, if you wanted, and that would be, that would be an excellent idea to have one of them on there.
When the RFP goes out, does it have the scoring criteria?
Yes, has to by law.
Is the committee created by staff with advice from you, city council?
Exactly, yeah, they would, they would just determine who they think ought to be on the team and, and.
Staff would?
Yes, staff would do that, yes.
We go, we, we go through RFQ processes all the time. One of the pieces, not, we haven't necessarily done for design bill, but we, we do this pretty frequently on, uh, some other projects. And so we usually, uh, as Mr. New mentioned, uh, we have a number of different disciplines across the city that are represented, finance, public works, et cetera. And so, uh, it's not atypical for us to put those together.
Okay, but that does require council approval.
Yes, sir. More of a technical review than, than anything else is how, how, what kind of work have they done in the past? Have they come in within budget, how they, you know, what, how many years have they worked together, that kind of stuff, so we can, um.
Do we have any local, uh, weight on, on that aspect of it as far as the design build team?
Um, it's, it is possible for us to look at, um, you know, that as a piece of the criteria. Um, it's a little bit different than the competitive sealed bid process, uh, which does allow for, state law allows for, uh, you know, a percentage of weight. Uh, we'll work through that within the, the qualification statement that goes out.
We do have some, some, uh, criteria in there right now that I've already provided Stuart for, for some advantages, for it to be a local team or at least one of the team, if it's, if it's separate, a, a separate architect and builder. But it just kind of depends on who, who wants to submit it. Because y'all's point earlier about the current construction market is a, is a concern. Not only from the cost standpoint, but the availability to do it. But you think of like King William District in San Antonio, those houses, that's what we're talking about. That's what this house is like. And so those are the kind of builders that do that kind of work is who you're looking for. Now that, we may have some locally, so we certainly wanna, uh, engage the interest of those guys. And that's what that request, that request for an expression of interest is all about, is to drum up interest. Because not everybody in San Antonio is gonna see that for a project in City of Curville. So we wanna make sure we've got the, the word out so that everybody has an opportunity to take.
I probably shouldn't say this because they're gonna get conceded, but I do wanna say, we really trust this staff. They're qualified, do a great job, and I know they will on this.
I, I, I agree. There, I, a little biased on my part, but I've worked with these guys for a long time and I, I, uh, I agree with you.
So what's the timeline for all of this?
Yeah, so we would bring the resolution, uh, back to you guys, uh, uh, next Tuesday and go ahead and, uh, check that box on state law. Uh, and then we would, uh, begin to, we've already really started, uh, beginning to accumulate the documentation. Uh, we would anticipate being, uh, issue that, uh, hopefully by the end of, uh, at least middle of April, uh, if not before then. Uh, and then we'd keep that out there, uh, for probably four to six weeks. But we'll have the full timeline for you next week, uh, when we bring the resolution. But we're anticipating initiating that process this spring, so we can go ahead and get started. We've, we've, we've met the major milestone within the agreement, uh, in regards to, uh, the fundraising, uh, through the good work of, of our, uh, our, our heritage, uh, folks, uh, that are here with us. And so that's what has now initiated, uh, this process.
Uh, just a couple of things. One, back, or to the first line in this, the acquisition of the property in twenty, twenty fifteen. That came to us as a donation, am I right?
Correct, that's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Second thing, and this may have been dealt with in the budget, I'm not sure. Are we looking at an increase in library staff?
No, again, this is intended to be operated, uh, by the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. Uh, and so essentially, we're the landlord for the facility. Um, and so there's a close connection, uh, with our, uh, existing library, cuz it is on the library complex, the overall. But, uh, we're not necessarily anticipating additional staff for this project.
All right, if we, if we move into it and we're operating and so forth and we realize there may need to be additional staff, then we'll consider that then.
Yeah, uh, you know, the, the overall library complex and the overall operations, obviously, we, we look at that on an annual basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we're continuing to see more and more activity on that library complex campus beyond just what, you know, we're anticipating here to be, um, privately operated via the, the Heritage Center. Um, certainly that grounds is getting more and more use. And as it is improved, I think we'll get more and more use, uh, out of that overall library complex. It's already very busy, uh, but certainly I think as we get it spruced up, it's gonna get more use.
Yeah.
So this will be, should be, anticipate right now, strictly volunteers?
Um, I believe that the, uh, Heritage Center actually will have paid staff that will be operating the facility, but those will not be city employees.
Not city, okay.
And then it does state in the contract, in lieu of rent, that they're going to facilitate, to, to, to administer the museum, so.
No doubt, there'll be volunteers probably involved as well, but, yeah.
As far as the scope of this facility itself, uh, in one of your slides, you mentioned, uh, entertainment. Um, can you elaborate on what kind of entertainment? I mean, are you thinking about like doing weddings out of this thing as a wedding venue? Or is, is, I mean, i- is it gonna be multifunctional?
Yeah, our, our representatives from HHC may wanna provide some input cuz they're really view the tenants that are, are operating the, the building.
The, uh, Bill Rector, uh, the contract, uh, says that we will share the outside grounds. And so wedding venues would be a possibility.
Okay.
Convention events would be a possibility. Will be a multi-use, uh, facility that where the interior and the exterior will contribute to use.
Okay, so will you still be having the farmer's market there?
The, it is anticipated that the farmer's market will continue to operate in the exterior of the building as it does now.
Okay.
During construction, it's gonna need to move. But once we're open, the farmer's market will continue to be there. And the farmer's market, as you know, is looking now at possibility of two days, uh, being open on, uh, Friday afternoon and Saturday morning.
Okay.
So we see a lot more activity, a lot more usage of the city's property.
Space will be better utilized for that as well, won't it? Once it's, once it's remodeled and opened up that, the outside area, is that part of the scope?
Yeah, a- again, it.
We start with the big piece and see what we, where we get.
It is right now, the, you know, the primary focus of the scope is the building itself, uh, but certainly the grounds are a part of that.
That was part of, I mean.
So part of the overall concept.
It was all the bells and whistles.
That's right, and so we're just gonna have to see within the budget how much, how far we're, we're able to, to inspire that. The city will continue to, uh, maintain the primary role of grounds usage. Uh, whereas HHC, uh, will have, uh, as a tenant, will have primary control interior to the building. So it kind of depends on what, you asked about entertainment and other avenues, it, it depends on what it is, right? Uh, and so we'll be working in close partnership to make sure we can fully utilize the, the, all of the, that grounds and facility as much as possible.
Yeah, and I don't wanna get into the weeds at all, but, but what about the, the usage? What if, what if the, the facility is operating at the same time that an outdoor event? I mean, how does that relationship work as far as mine and yours when it comes to the hours of operation of the building?
Yeah, we have some of those already outlined within the management phase of the agreement. Uh, but certainly it's gonna be an ongoing piece of, you know, it depends what that activity is, right? And how disruptive it may be, we're just gonna have to work through that.
Could you forward me a copy of that executed agreement? And in the meantime, it, was it in the agreement or what's the agreement on maintaining, on future maintenance of the building?
Yeah, so it really, um, as far as the building, uh, structure goes, uh, we'll be in the landlord role. And so we'll have maintenance responsibilities. And there is a portion of the budget right now that has been allocated for, uh, future maintenance aspects in regards to, um, the elements that HHC is responsible for as a tenant. Uh, fixtures, uh, displays, all of those pieces, that will be their responsibility.
And that was one of the things that, that Gary, I remember it was a big deal to him. So didn't we allocate like four hundred thousand dollars in a, in a fund for, if something major like HVAC has to be replaced? And, yeah, so that we have that, that pot, yeah, it's already there.
Is that continuing to grow as each budget process and we continue to put more money in it or?
Again, it'll be subject to annual appropriations within the budget process.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from Mr. Baron?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you.
I believe there, there is a meeting room upstairs, isn't there? Wasn't that part of the, the interim? So there will be some in, there'll be some room upstairs too for meetings or gathering space as well as part of their, as part of their, um, proposal as it stands today.
So we do have an executive session, uh, on a couple of different topics related to this site that we want to talk with you about. But again, uh, we do wanna, uh, uh, just reiterate the great work, uh, from HHC and raising funds, uh, over this last, uh, two years. They've really done Yaman's work on, on, on getting out there and, and raising these to get, to be able to get to this point, so. Uh, I'm not sure if you gentlemen wanna.
Thank y'all, very much.
It's, it's exciting.
It really is, yeah. All right, thank you. At this time, at ten forty-three, we will go into executive session. We gonna remain here?
Yes, we can just remain here.
Hey, the executive session of, uh, this workshop is now over at eleven oh one. Okay.